Would you please rise for the pledge?
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this meeting of Bowling Green City Council. We're all, we're pleased that you're all here tonight. If I could, before we start, I'd just like to take a minute and specifically recognize the presence of Superintendent Scrooge. He's become a regular attendee to our meetings, and I just want to take a minute and thank him so much for attending our meetings. I think it really is representative of the, of the cooperation between the schools and the city. The city, I think, has been well documented that the city benefits from a strong public school system, and I think it's been well documented that in Bowling Green that we've had the benefit of that strong public school system for many, many years, and we continue to benefit from that. So, we thank you for your support of the city mission, of the city's mission, and we look forward to opportunities to collaborate with the schools in the future and hopefully make, continue to make Bowling Green a great place to live and raise our children. So, thanks. We appreciate it.
Brian's here, too.
It's better, I think, yep. The minutes for the regular meeting that was held on September 6th, 2016, were presented to council prior to this meeting. Are there any corrections or amendments to these minutes?
Mr. President, I have a few corrections. Kay, if you'd look at the reading of legislation section.
Did I forget to delete you?
It shows that I voted several times, which is pretty good since I wasn't here. Not in each instance, but in several instances. So, if you'd go through there.
I absolutely will. Sorry about that.
Okay, Kay, please, if you would, make those changes.
Yes.
Thank you. Are there any other observations or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the minutes as they will be amended by the clerk of council?
So moved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. The motion passes. The amended minutes are approved. Kay, do we have correspondence this evening?
No, there's no correspondence.
Thank you. We move quickly into our official reports. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, members of council, and all assembled on this absolutely gorgeous evening. And it's very fitting because we have a special, we're going to engage in a special act of recognition tonight, and I'm going to call the co-chair of the Human Relations Commission, the Reverend Mary Jane Saunders, to come forward, along with the other co-chair, Emily Manago, Dr. Manago, and Dr. Akiko Jones, I see here. Are there any, please come up, Akiko. Are there any others here from the commission? Hardworking as you are, and so forth, but this is something we had hoped to do during the summer, but our, our act of recognition was held up just a little bit because the family was in Lebanon. And I hope you had a good experience there back home with, with family. But I'm going to ask So Shaheen and his, two of his three children to come forward. Unfortunately, Amal could not be with us tonight. She's in classes and so forth. We're a little cramped up here, so, but we can work our way around here just a little bit. But I'm going to turn the program over to our two co-chairs of the city's Human Relations Commission, because this is something we do at least once, possibly two times a year. And that's just, I just really think this is outstanding, the honor roll award and of the Human Relations Commission, because it's one of these really neat acts. Thank you. I'll turn the program over to both of you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Can you reach it?
Yeah, sure. Good evening, council members and the rest. And it is, again, a pleasure to be here on behalf of the Human Relations Commission to present one of our honor roll awards. And I am, I have a script that's been prepared by Marcy St. John, who is the secretary of the Human Relations Commission, and she always does a great job, so I'm not going to change her words at all, but I'm going to read what she says, because she was such an important part of this award and this selection. Just a reminder that several times each year, the Bowling Green Human Relations Commission selects individuals or groups to receive an honor roll award for actions that promote respect for diversity in our community. Our town's quality of life rests on this foundation of equality and understanding, a foundation built by countless actions, both in the public eye and behind the scenes. The Human Relations Commission welcomes honor roll nominations by the public as well, and this includes the Drum Major for Peace Award, which we give at the Martin Luther King Junior Celebration in January. And just as a point of information, forms for these awards are now on the city's website on the HRC page. So, if you have someone in mind, we really encourage you to get those nominations into us, so we can continue to recognize folks who make this such a great place to live. But now, onto the business for the evening. So and Amal Shaheen are an example of bridge builders whose quiet efforts enhance our town as a community of peace. Most recently, and for the second consecutive year, they were key people at the Interfaith Peacemaking Breakfast Event, with their donations of excellent and beautifully presented Mediterranean food from Southside Six, which they own. Their gift allowed the event to proceed smoothly, as attendees heard talks on peacemaking from representatives of Six faith groups. Earlier this winter, Not in Our Town Bowling Green sponsored two forums on the nature and the effects of Islamophobia on all of us. The planners thought it was critical to have a Bowling Green resident representing the Muslim faith. And so, Amal convinced So, twice, that he should be that representative. Talking about one's personal faith in such a vulnerable setting called for courage and community spirit, and So's comments and insights were an important contribution to the understanding of his experience living the Muslim faith in the Bowling Green community. Summertime finds Southside Six serving their menu at Lunch in the Park and educating customers about Mediterranean cuisine. Parks and Recreation Director Kristen Ottley also cites their generosity when asked for support for other public events as well. The Shaheen family has been a part of Bowling Green since 1991. When their name comes up in conversation, it's always followed by the observation that, quote, "They are great people, very generous, and very community oriented. They are good neighbors, and the Human Relations Commission is honored to present them with this honor roll recognition."
In the certificate reads, "The Human Relations Commission of the City of Bowling Green proudly presents the honor roll award to So Lee and Amal Shaheen. The Human Relations Commission honor roll recognizes and applauds individuals, organizations, and businesses who together, work together to promote diversity initiatives and work to improve the well-being of persons in need here and away from home. Your collective efforts benefit the community of Bowling Green, and we sincerely thank you." And it's presented by Richard A. Edwards, Mayor, and also Chair of Human Relations Commission, Mary Jane Saunders. Thank you.
So, now, you know, we have to put you to work now, but for this great honor here, but congratulations. Would you like to say something? Unaccustomed as you are to speaking, but you always have wonderful thoughts and super good taste.
Well, I just want to say thank you to everybody for recognizing us, and the most important thing for this for me is hopefully for my children to see what, how important it is to be involved in your community and your faith and whatever else you can do. Thank you all. Thanks, everybody.
I think you should introduce your two children, too.
This is Omar, is my little twin. That's Zain. And Mohammed and Amal are, unfortunately, can't be with us tonight, so, but I do want to thank everybody for being here, and thanks for recognizing us.
Thank you.
And whatever else we can do for this.
I believe you have before you several appointments to committees and commissions, new appointments. And if you have any questions about them, we're very grateful that Amanda Kress is joining on the Revolving Loan Fund Committee, and she will fill the unexpired term of Ann Stott, who recently resigned from the Revolving Loan Fund Committee because she took, along with her husband, faculty positions at Ohio University in accountancy. And they were long a part of this community and great representatives of the university. But the Revolving Loan Fund has a variety of professionals overseeing money loaned from this fund. One of these professional backgrounds includes a certified public accountant. Ann's departure from the committee left them without a CPA. Amanda has been working as a CPA in Bowling Green for over 15 years, and her office is at 315 North Main Street. And so far, she's a 1996 graduate of Ohio University, and she's a member of the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants and the Ohio Society of Certified Public Accountants. So, that's the, there's, Mr. President, you've agreed to serve on the, as representative on, of council on the Audit Committee, and then we have the Loan, Revolving Loan Fund Committee, and a reconfirmation of, for three representatives serving very faithfully on the City University Relations Commission. Julie Broadwell, Chris Ostrowski, and Barbara Ruland, each for one-year appointments. So, I recommend them for your consideration. Appreciate it very much, and want to thank these individuals for their, their service. Other than that, I just, and maybe, Brian O'Connell, you were going to mention about sending some of our folks over to Oberlin last week ago Saturday? Okay, fine. Very good, because we were part of a mutual aid agreement, and it'd be better to come from, from you, I think, because you, you provided the liaison there with the city of Oberlin. And, Mr. President, members of council, that concludes my report, so, unless you have questions for me.
Are there questions for the mayor? Very good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome.
Are there, or is there a motion to approve the appointments to the boards and commissions as presented by the mayor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. The motion passes. The appointments are approved as submitted.
Very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Municipal Administrator, Ms. Tretter.
Good evening. As we've been reporting for several months, the parking transition in City Parking Lot Number Two from meters to parking kiosks has occurred. The lot has been active for one week. As with any significant change, there has been a learning curve for the public and for our employees as well. From our observations and experiences in that lot, some changes have already been made, and other changes are being contemplated. Want to provide you an update on those this evening. Among those changes in the short-term category are the addition of signage outlining the rules in the lot, better identifying the kiosk locations, simplifying language on the screens, and more staff time in the lot to help with this transition. In the observation stage is the consideration of adding additional units to the lot. At busy times, lines have formed at the kiosks. While we think this will lessen as people become more familiar with the units, an extra unit may also help to shorten waits. Additionally, as this is our largest public lot, another unit could be strategically located to help out folks parking there. Of course, at $11,000 per kiosk, this is a significant consideration, which is why we are going to remain responsive to citizen comments, yet be patient as well. One thing that will not change is a regulation that has long been in place in city parking lots. The back end of the vehicle must be visible, meaning you may not back into the spot, and you may not pull through the spot and park there and remain there. We understand that this is frustrating to folks, and so, we're hoping that maybe if they understand the reason why, that may be helpful to, to understanding compliance. Enforcement in the lots is done by the reading of license plates. The license plate is then compared to those with valid payments. An automated reader also completes this task. So, you may be thinking, "All right, Lori, well, a license plate's required on the front and the back, why are you making us, you know, show the back?" Well, if you look around, not everyone always has a front plate, and also, not all states require a front plate. So, for ease of consistency, we are just saying in all city lots, we need to be able to see the back end of the vehicles. Now, on a good note, since I led with the bad news, the ability to pay with credit cards has been very positively received, as well as the ability to receive text alerts 10 minutes from the time expiration on your meter. And that text alert then does offer folks the opportunity to expand the time rate from, from the phone. We also received overwhelmingly positive feedback from folks about the use of Lot Two during the Black Swamp Arts Festival, and this proved a significant labor savings for our crews and a safer and more open atmosphere for those enjoying the music. And speaking of the festival, a shout-out of congratulations to the festival organizers on a wonderful event, and also appreciation is extended to our crews who worked cooperatively in preparation and during the event. That completes my report.
Great. Are there questions for Lori? Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Planning Director, Ms. Saylor. Questions for Heather. Thank you. Parks and Recreation Director, Ms. Ottley.
I have a brief report, because I'm pretty sure Mr. Marsh took some of my time the last time, if we recall. I did not forget, so I'll be brief. Quick update from our Levy Committee. Educational brochures that look like this went in the mail today, so I will hand those to, although I would assume that everyone in this room should get one, because they are being sent to active voters, which especially at this table, I would assume you are. So, you should receive those in the mail, but you can never have too many. Signs will be going out later this week, so watch for those. The Foundation's 21st Annual Wine and Cheese Event is this Friday, so if you have not signed up for that, that's okay. You can show up that night. We will gladly, the Foundation will gladly take your money at the door. There's a lot of great live auction and silent auction items, and just fun food and drink to be had, so please plan on coming to that. The last thing that I have is next Tuesday, at our regular monthly park board meeting, we will, we will be presenting our five-year master plan to the board, so, and then it will come to you all, so, that's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Questions for Kristen. City Attorney, Mr. Marsh. Questions for Mr. Marsh. Thank you. Utilities Director, Mr. O'Connell.
I'll be in Columbus next week, Monday through Thursday, at the AMP Conference. They have an annual conference every year, because it's what's annual. But I'll still be out of town next week. I'm good that way. Sorry. But that's coming up next, next week. As Mayor mentioned, we did have a mutual aid call from the city of Oberlin, which is another AMP member. They're in north-central Ohio, maybe a little more to the east, but ourselves and the two other AMP communities responded. This was back on the rainy event that came through on Saturday, September the 10th. It came through Bowling Green pretty quickly. Didn't cause us really much damage, a lot of wind, a lot of rain, but it passed through relatively fast. By the time it got to Oberlin, it had developed into a much stronger storm. They had some winds up to 80, 90 miles per hour, and caused a lot of power lines and poles to drop, trees were down. So, I think we sent about three guys and two trucks over for two or three days and helped them restore power. So, this is a program that we're, we're part of through AMP. Back in 2014, we had a large windstorm blow some pole lines on Dunbridge Road down. We had mutual aid responding from other AMP members that came to help us get that, those poles put back up, so, way that we can help each other during times where we have some crisis going on. They were very thankful for our efforts and sent us, you know, several thank-you notes by email. I think I tried to forward some of those to yourselves, but that was good we could go, could go help. This last Saturday, the 17th, we had another rainy event here in BG. A little more substantial rain, had about 2.9 inches of rain out at the wastewater plant. We did have a combined sewer overflow at the Poe Mercer Station. It lasted from 11:00 a.m. to about 8:00 p.m., so we were treating the 30,000 gallons per day through most of that, that Saturday. I believe it ended just before midnight on the 17th. We started dropping treatment, because of, of course, the CSO ended at 8:00 o'clock. That should not count against us on our permit requirements of four or less in a year, because that was an exceptional rainy event. It was above the average, above the normal. But, you know, we do everything we can to try to treat as much water as possible when we have those big rainy events, and we have the 5,000 gallon holding tank there at Poe Mercer as well, so we store that, and that does get, does get treated, the plant, after the storm has passed. That's all I have, unless you have other questions.
Questions for Brian.
At the Board of Public Utilities meeting, there was some discussion about phosphorus and how we treat that. You don't have to go into great detail, but do you feel that if the restrictions are tightened in the future, that we'll be able to deal with it without too much cost?
Yeah, that was part of the goal of our biologic phosphorus removal project, was to get away from using chemical applications to remove precipitate the phosphorus and sell it out in the solids. So, we're trying to use a biological method where the microorganisms will consume phosphorus and will help us get lower readings. We were, we were within permit compliance prior to that project. We should be within permit compliance afterwards. EPA did come back to us with our permit renewal. They'd asked us for, to put a lower phosphorus limit in our permit. They wanted us to go to, we were at a 1.0 before, they want us to go to 0.5. We argued and said, "Well, you can't give us a 0.5 when we've just done this project to try to lower phosphorus limits." And we needed, need to get the equipment, get the process operating properly before we can really prove what we can or can't do. The models show it works, the theory shows that it works, but putting it in application is a different practice. And so, we asked for some timeframe to optimize that new treatment process. We think we've worked with them to get that in the permit as a 0.7 instead of a 0.5, but the goal is to get it down to a 0.5. I don't think anybody else in Ohio has been given the 0.5 number. Why they chose us from the beginning, I don't know, but we had a project, and the, the model showed that we could get, get to a 0.5 or below with this biological process. Maybe that had something to do with it, I don't know. But our, our goal is to get our phosphorus readings as low as possible, so we've got some ideas on ways to, to get down to 0.5 or below. It's going to take some, some money to do that. There's the blowers that are out there at the pumps at the wastewater plant now, that I think need to get replaced with some different, different size blowers. Those are not really cheap items, but that will help optimize the phosphorus removal project and get our numbers down. If we can't get it down with the biological process, there's still always the option to go back to using chemical treatment, and, but we're trying not to do that, because obviously that chemical costs raise the cost of treating for phosphorus. So, if we can use, use the biological process, that would be the best way to, to do it in the future. We're trying to implement the best technology possible that we can to get it down as low as possible. You know, we know those, that phosphorus discharge has implications for downstream and at the lake as well, so we're trying to be proactive and do our part to, you know, get ahead of the curve, so to speak. EPA didn't tell us we had to do this phosphorus removal project. It was something that we were investigating. We saw as a possibility that we could use it at the plant and lower the phosphorus discharge, so we thought it was the right prudent thing to do, so we made that step, and, but we're, we're pretty sure we're going to get there. We're not really too concerned about it at this point.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Public Works Director, Mr. Kraft.
I have no report.
Questions for Brian. Thank you. Moving on to the introduction of new legislation.
Mr. President.
Mr. McComber.
From the Finance Committee, I have a resolution transferring previously appropriated funds. I have a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission on authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. I have an ordinance providing supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2016, and ending December 31, 2016. I have an ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator to advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts for professional cleaning services for the municipal court building. And I have an ordinance authorizing the city's participation in the Treasurer of Ohio's Market Access Program, authorizing the preparation and filing of an application for that program, and the execution and delivery of a standby note purchase agreement with the treasurer, and other necessary and appropriate documents in declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Bob. Do we have any council committee reports this evening? Seeing none, we move forward to lobby visitation. At this point, we welcome anyone in attendance that is so interested to address council to do so. If you would begin by approaching the microphone and clearly stating your name and address for the record, we would appreciate that. So, is there anyone that would like to address council this evening? Okay, seeing none, we move forward to the reading of legislation.
Legislation for first reading. Resolution number 3641 for first reading. Resolution transferring previously appropriated funds.
Mr. President.
Mr. McComber.
I move to suspend the rules and give resolution 3641 at second and third readings.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
Seeliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes. The motion passes. The rules are suspended for resolution 3641.
Resolution number 3641 for second and third reading. Resolution transferring previously appropriated funds.
Mr. President.
Mr. McComber.
I move to adopt resolution 3641.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
Seeliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
The motion passes. The rules are suspended for resolution 3642.
Resolution number 3642 for second and third reading. Resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor.
Mr. President.
Mr. McComber.
I move to suspend the rules and give resolution 3642 at second and third readings.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Kay, would you call the roll, please?
McComber?
Yes.
Seeliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
The motion passes. The rules are suspended for resolution 3642.
Resolution number 3642 for second and third reading. Resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor.
Mr. President.
Mr. McComber.
I move to adopt resolution 3642.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Seeliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
The motion passes. Resolution 3642 is adopted.
Ordinance number 8533 for first reading. Ordinance providing supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2016, and ending December 31, 2016.
Mr. President.
Mr. McComber.
I move to suspend the rules and give ordinance 8533 at second and third readings.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
Seeliger?
Yes.
The motion passes. The rules are suspended for ordinance 8533.
Ordinance number 8533 for second and third reading. Ordinance providing supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2016, and ending December 31, 2016.
Mr. President.
Mr. McComber.
I move to adopt ordinance 8- I move to adopt ordinance 8533.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll? Or, I'm sorry, is there any discussion? Kay, would you call the roll, please?
Osbacher.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
McComber.
Yes.
Seeliger.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
The motion passes. Ordinance 8533 is adopted.
Ordinance number 8534 for first reading. Ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator to advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts for professional cleaning services for the municipal court building. Ordinance number 8535 for first reading. Ordinance authorizing the city's participation in the Treasurer of Ohio's Market Access Program, authorizing the preparation and filing of an application for that program and the execution and delivery of a standby note purchase agreement with the treasurer and other necessary and appropriate documents and declaring an emergency. Legislation for second reading. Resolution number 3638 for second reading. Resolution adopting and authorizing an amended BG Transit Drug and Alcohol Testing Policy. My numbers are messed up on there, so...
I hit that as 3637?
Yeah, it's 3638. My numbers on the agenda, I believe, are messed up, so... Yeah, okay. Resolution number 3639 for second reading. Resolution declaring the city-owned real estate, generally known as 215 West Worcester Street, is open public space. And resolution number 3640. Resolution imposing a temporary moratorium on medical marijuana cultivation, processing, and retail dispensary facilities within the City of Bowling Green, Ohio. Ordinance number 8531 for second reading. Ordinance amending and adopting section 12.02 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding benchmark grade datum. And ordinance number 8532 for second reading. Ordinance amending and adopting section 76.28D of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding parking prohibitions.
That concludes the items on our agenda this evening. Is there any other business to come before council?
Mr. President, we moved through the agenda so quickly that if I could, I'd like to take a couple of minutes to publicly announce something that I have been telling people for the last three years, if they asked, which is when the city council races are run next year in November of 2017, six of the seven seats will be up for grabs, and I will not be running to retain the seat that I currently hold and have held this is my 11th year. I have a sort of a feeling that council functions best when there is a mix of veterans and new people on council. And when I ran in 2013, quite frankly, I was a bit concerned at the time that perhaps I might be staying too long. I was persuaded otherwise and did run again, but surely if that was a concern in 2013, it's an overwhelming concern by 2017. I have some professional and personal reasons for not running again. I cited the professional reason, the personal reason. As some of you know, there's a very special little boy down on the north end of Cincinnati. He calls me Poppy. He's about a year and a half old. I was chatting with him the other day, and it may have sounded like a baby babbling to most people, but I've seen this kid a lot since he's been born, and I think I could interpret what he said, and I think he said, "Poppy, if you weren't on city council in Bowling Green, you could come down and visit me anytime I wanted to see you." I'll admit the alternative interpretation is, "Poppy, this diaper weighs about eight pounds, and either take me upstairs and do your duty or call grandma, because she'll take care of it." I'm going with the former interpretation. At any rate, I don't want to continue to schedule visits to Cincinnati to see my grandson around city council meetings. I think I will have been here plenty long enough. I do intend to serve till the end of my term. I finish what I start. Health permitting, I won't be leaving early, and I will try to keep fully engaged and do the best job I can, but December 31, 2017 will be my last day on city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Do appreciate your sentiments. It's a long time away. Hopefully, by the end of '17, we'll be able to continue to benefit from your experience. So there will be plenty of time for us to continue to do that and also to express our appreciation for your time served on city council. But thank you very much. We do appreciate that. Is there any other business to come before city council? Is there a motion to approve councilperson Roland from this evening's meeting?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. Councilman Roland is excused. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. We are adjourned. Thank you.